Good evening. Welcome to the Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings. Today is Tuesday, March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. It is six P. M. Please rise.
...... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father Jesus, we come to your throne tonight with praise and thanksgiving. We come to you, Heavenly Father, and ask that you give wisdom to these five leaders that you've placed in this office. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you give them the ability to make the decisions that best serves this great city that you've given to us. We ask that you be with them, each one of them. We ask Heavenly Father Jesus that you be with each city worker, each person that provides the services for this community. Be with our first responders, be with our police department. Heavenly Father, lift them up. Just give them strength when they need it because we know, Heavenly Father, that these are perilous times. And they need, Heavenly Father, to realize and know that we here respect them and that, Heavenly Father Jesus, that we're behind them. And we just ask you, Heavenly Father, to give us the strength when we need it. We thank you for this wonderful day that you provided and ask that you bless each one in it. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz. Council Authority Member Al Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Two Cindy Fosse.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barber Martinez is absent. Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There will be no changes to the agenda tonight. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we'll proceed to number two, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council or the L. A. R. Board. Individual comments will be limited to maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented under public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Make your comments directly to the city council, L. R. A. Staff. Do we have public comments?
Hello, I'm Haskell Moore of Riverbank Patterson Road. Last council meeting as that, I missed a couple. I've been rather busy. And Councilman Campbell, you made a statement to me, to five of us that are here that night, that you've been hearing the same minority five complaining about cannabis shops in Riverbank. And you said, and you said it twice, "Show me the majority. Show me the majority. I got it." And this is for everyone else except Councilman Foss. Foss, I'm sorry if I said your name wrong because you didn't agree with what came later. When everyone else that spoke said that you agree with what Councilman Campbell says. So these are for you. Twenty-two hundred and ninety-nine signatures total. Ordinance twenty-eighteen dash zero zero one, eleven hundred and sixty-four. Twenty-eighteen dash zero zero three, eleven hundred and thirty-five. We needed a little less than one thousand per ordinance to make this, and we overshot it on purpose. We had more time, would have had even more. So this is for you guys. I think that now we showed you the majority of the percentage of people that live in the city. That's where the number one thousand come from. A certain percentage of that, we had to reach one thousand names. And we did that and overdid that. So we showed you the majority, as far as we're concerned. So now the rest is up to you. And that is reconsider and repeal your decision on cannabis shops in Riverbank, California. And also, I'd like to add, I would like to thank Bill O'Brien and the churches in this town that helped us out and all the lovely people that signed our petitions. Thank you very much if you're watching or listening. Thank you.
Any other further public comment? Vicki?
Good evening, council members and Mayor O'Brien. My name is Vicki Holt and I'm the manager at the Riverbank Library. I'm here to tell you about the programming that we have at the library this month. Storytime is on Mondays at ten-thirty. Bilingual storytime is on Tuesdays at ten-thirty. That goes until the end of the month. We're off for April. This month's art lab is on March twentieth. It involves drawing. Kids will make scribble art and then color that in. And then they'll experiment with drawing continuous lines. The book club is reading The Silver Star by Jeanette Walls. The next book club meeting is on March twenty-seventh at four P. M. On April fifth at four P. M., activated storyt- story theater will be here to tell stories. They do skits. They're going to do The Three Little Pigs and Old Joe and the Carpenter. Kids six to twelve can come a half an hour before the program starts and be trained to be part of the skit. Next month's art lab is on Tuesday, April tenth at three-thirty. Kids will make paper sculptures and mobiles. They will learn a little about the artist Alexander Calder and Henri Matisse. I had to think about how to say that. All programs at the library are free to the public. It is because of the Eighth of Ascent's dedicated sales tax that we're able to offer these programs for free. Please stop by and visit. You are always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further public comment?
My name is Arthur Hidalgo. I'm a Riverbank resident, and I'm standing here in front of you guys today hoping that you guys will listen to what the residents of Riverbank have to say. Hopefully, you'll withdraw both your offers to the dispensaries that you want to put into Riverbank. And I also want to thank you guys. I'm one of the guys that got all the signatures. So I got to go door to door, meet a lot of neat people, had a really good time. One gentleman that had been following commented on why I talked about Oregon, Washington, and Colorado and gave you the stats on those instead of going to Stockton and Modesto. So I couldn't get the information I needed in time for Stockton. But I do know that in Modesto, since marijuana has been introduced to their city, that the crime rate has gone up thirteen percent due to marijuana. And I know that seventy percent of all their homicides right now are marijuana-related. So I don't know why you guys think bringing this into our town is such a great idea. It's a no-win situation. So once again, I'm just asking you guys, please listen to what we got to say and don't bring it in. That's all I got to say.
Hello, my name's Reggie Kumar. I live in the city of Modesto, California. My family and I own a business right behind the proposed dispensary place on Patterson Road. We own a karate school. We weren't considered being a youth center, even though we have forty kids under the age of twelve, less than twenty feet away. I didn't know how this worked, and you guys did research on the thing the first time I came and what qualified as a youth center and all those types of things. So after I came the first time and I was told that I don't qualify as the youth center, I still don't understand why, but I'm learning how to do the business, and I'm just a karate instructor. My job is to teach kids karate. Keep them safe, keep them out of trouble, be like a mentor. But I see now that, like, there's business plans and I have to follow the way things and routines are going. So you guys set out a business plan that you guys wanted to follow. So I did my own research, studied cities, big cities like L. A., all the way up to Oregon, and how they did and how they went around with their businesses trying to introduce cannabis. And everywhere I can research, they ask for permission from the local businesses to try to open these cannabis clubs, or even people compare it to alcohol. You guys put it along the same sides of alcohol. So if people wanted their license to sell alcohol, they would ask, out of respect, the businesses surrounding. That was not followed. The procedures were not followed. I am not denouncing cannabis in any way. I'm not for it. That's my personal preference. But I'm just saying routines weren't followed. Procedures were not followed properly the way you guys said. And you guys have made promises to us that this would be a nice facility, clean facility. Within the last five weeks, I have called the non-emergency line six times. People smoking cannabis outside the dispensary already. People from the dispensary trespassing onto the property of the karate school already. And it has not even opened. So as you allowing this to go further, what does the city of Riverbank plan to do to keep their promise? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jose Cardenas and I live in Riverbank. I felt that while I was doing research, I have noticed that law enforcement have been the most concerned with opening a marijuana dispensary. According to the Los Angeles Times, police contended that dispensaries in Southern California have had a negative impact on the communities where they open or they operate and are associated with negative consequences for the surrounding communities, including robberies and murder, including two of them have been children. Also, I fully understand if the money from dispensaries could go to helping the schools get more programs, I may transfer students to Enoch's because they offer way more opportunities and programs in Riverbank High. But if you want to improve the schools, you should move it away from kids, families, and other businesses so kids won't run into this kind of people or situations. In my personal opinion, I feel that medical marijuana dispensary would simply not fit the town's oriented image due to the fact that I have family and friends that wish they could live in a quiet, peaceful town such as Riverbank.
May I ask him a couple of questions? I just want to know what school he goes to. What school do you go to?
I go to Enoch's High School in Modesto.
And there are drugs there, right?
No. Recently, they have dropped.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Gravel. I'm from Riverpink. And I support having cannabis dispensaries. The reason I do is because I believe that adults have a right to choose if they want to choose a more holistic option for health care. Right now, we have a crisis of an opioid epidemic in America. I think that teaching children that pills and alcohol are acceptable isn't quite the right game when you're causing further problems down the road. I'm not saying you should teach children cannabis is good. I believe in adult use, not child use, unless it's extreme circumstance and you're using a medicine that's non-psychoactive, something like C. B. D., which can help with seizures. And when you see the actual results of the children who have severe autism and have life-altering effects every day, and they try a little bit of cannabis medicine, which is natural. It comes from the earth. And if you believe, you know, God created us, it came from God. And I don't think that the Creator was wrong. We have an endocannabinoid system throughout our body with multiple receptors, and that's specifically built to receive the cannabinoids in cannabis, which are the molecules that make up the plant themselves. I don't think that was an accident. The reason cannabis is so widely used for so many symptoms, I know it can sound like a blanket cure-all, but it's because we actually have a system in our body. We have endogenous cannabinoids that are made in our system, again, the endocannabinoid system. And you can learn any of this by doing a little bit of research yourself. I know that in the most recent city council meeting, there was a young lady who was speaking about how there are youth using, and she's aware of youth using marijuana. And one of the biggest reasons to support having legal dispensaries is to give your police force and give your town and give your city the funding to help prevent this, help prevent youth use, because that's certainly not what we want. And anybody who's under the age and seeking, I mean, I think she mentioned that he had escalated to psychedelics and further drugs. That sounds like someone who's in need of services and someone who really needs help. And banning dispensaries and not allowing that additional funding to go to the city, not allowing a safe, traceable, trackable business to be here allows the black market to thrive. And if they're already accessing it illegally, it's not going away that manner by not funding the police force. So I just really believe in just allowing people to choose. You know, Dare, the Dare program we all grew up in, has removed cannabis as a gateway drug from their program and their literature. The two items still on there are alcohol and tobacco. I don't see anyone upset about cruisers selling cigarettes or pizza plus selling alcohol. So I really encourage the citizens to take a look into the benefits of cannabis, not just what the facts you want to hear about what may be people overusing it or abusing it because you can come up with statistics for alcohol, which are much more severe and dangerous, and same thing for tobacco. And those are fully legal. And I believe in this country's right to have the states govern themselves of the chosen. And the voters in California have chosen to legalize cannabis, and I think we made the right decision. And I think going forward, you'll see in the future that it can help a lot of people, and there's more good than harm coming from it. And I just want to let everybody know and invite everyone to our Educational Outreach Day, which is going to be March twenty-fourth at the Community Center. There's two sessions, ten o'clock and two P. M., and we'll have a panel of experts on cannabis that you can ask questions and come and learn from.
Date again?
March twenty-fourth at the Community Center on Santa Fe. And it's going to be from ten A. M. and then, you know, go for about an hour or two, and then another session at two P. M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment?
Evening. My name is Daniel Lyon. I'm a Riverbank resident. I'm up here today, I'm concerned about public safety. What I'd like to know is what the city of Riverbank is doing to increase the safety of the surrounding neighborhoods. My other concern with the business going up is their hours of service. Right now, what they have posted is nine A. M. to nine P. M., seven days a week. I personally find this a little excessive, particularly during the week when there are children getting off buses. There's a bus stop about a thousand feet from that building. And I have children also on that bus, but there's a lot of children and families in that neighborhood about that time of day. So that is one of my biggest concerns, is what is the city of Riverbank going to do, along with the business, to help ensure the public safety? Thank you.
Any other comment? Seeing?
Good evening. My name is Letizia Hidalgo. I am a resident of Riverbank and have lived here for about thirty years. I was one of the participants in gathering signatures. Through the course of obtaining the signatures, we spoke to a lot of neighbors in this community. And in speaking with them, there were several concerns raised. A couple individuals mentioned that their children attended gymnastics, dance, and other various recreational activities near the shops in Modesto and that they had to move their children from these facilities because of the dangers that they were encountering. People were driving distracted, appeared to be under the influence. They were loitering in the parking lots, and they did not feel safe being there. And instead of keeping their children there where they enjoyed participating in these events, they decided to go to a different location. I'm worried about the same situation occurring here. A lot of our children attend the karate school right next to Flavors'. And the possibility of people loitering, roaming under the influence in that particular area frightens me. And my kids have really learned a lot from going to the karate school, as well as the other kids participating. I'm sure their parents can see them the same, that the discipline and the respect and motivation that they're learning there, it's something that you can't always get at school or at home. It's a special respect for the sport. And to think that the karate shop could close and lose their business just because of parents are afraid to take their kids there is really scary. I'm sure it is for the business owners as well, as well as as parents that our kids participate there. Also, there's, you know, again, the mention that that the people should be able to get medical marijuana is not something that we're arguing here. People are able to get medicinal marijuana from doctors here in Riverbank, and there's shops nearby in Modesto that are less than five miles. A lot of these locations are now also delivering. So the need to have one here in this immediate area is not really necessary, especially if they're delivering to your home. And then also, as our representatives here in this community, you know, we've been asked to bring people in to show the majority. Again, people work and aren't always able to attend. People are concerned. As you see, more people are coming and voicing their concerns, and I'm understanding the letters are coming in as well, as well as telephone calls. Mr. Campbell, he asked us to show you the majority. The petitions have been submitted and being reviewed. And Ms. Cruz, and when you were running initially for city council, you made a comment about that you will represent your community even if it meant being opposed to that, what the community is saying. And I ask that you hear us and really take into consideration what your community is saying and really show that you meant what you stated, as well as you elected officials, when you said that you would represent your community, that you will do so. And no, it's not always easy doing what people find the normal or believe to be easy or a fix to get money in here to this community, that yes, we do need it. But let's find other ways by keeping businesses like the karate school and others that may choose to come here. because it's a community-oriented place and people are looking for that. People are moving here for that reason. And I've heard people from the Bay Area who've stated also that they moved here to get away from the big cities and the liberal, liberal, uh, thinking of the people there. Um, accepting what community says should be accepted instead of deciding what is best for the community and, and the total circumstances surrounding the community. So please take that into consideration and let's keep businesses thriving like the karate school and others that are family-oriented. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comment? Seeing none, I close public comment. Move forward to the consent calendar consistent of item three A, wave reading. Item three B, approval of February twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Do I have a comment or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I second that.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Council authority members, Fossey.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
George Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Item five, consistent item five one, first reading and introduction of a proposed ordinance repealing in its entirety, chapter ninety-four, park regulations of title nine, general regulations and adding a new chapter twenty-four, park regulations to the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Excuse me, thank you mayor and good evening council. Uh, this item is actually a cleanup item. Um, there's a few policy considerations in it, but in general, what we were trying to accomplish was, uh, clean up a number of old items that needed to be made consistent in our code. And, uh, our assistant city manager, Marisol, is going to step you through that.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. So tonight, as the city manager mentioned, we have some items that we'd like to amend as part of the park regulations that were adopted by the city council several years ago. Um, a lot of what we are seeing are just some cleanup items given the, um, issues that the park staff have faced as our city parks have gotten more popular. And during the summer seasons when the park attendance increases, um, they want to make sure that they have the ability to keep all of the residents who are there safe um, from any situations that have been going on. So a few of the amendments that you'll be seeing, um, today within the ordinance is a reduction of the speed um, within the park from fifteen miles per hour down to five miles per hour. Obviously during the summer months, when you have children that are running to and from cars, um, we want to make sure that they're safe and that vehicles are traveling at a safe speed in order to avoid hitting them. Um, we've made some amendments to, um, how you can, where and how you can start, um, or fuel a fire. Um, obviously this does not apply if you're using, um, the charcoal barbecue pits that are at the parks. Um, there's obviously safe methods to, to do that. Uh, commercial activity and commercial solicitation. Uh, we've had residents complain about the fact that, um, they have commercial solicitors coming up to them, um, asking to, to purchase things or, or selling items to them. Uh, we also wanted to make sure that pursuant to the health and safety code, we included a prohibition of the smoking of marijuana, uh, same as what we do with tobacco and vaping. Um, we also have made some amendments to the group gathering permits. Um, prior to, uh, a group gathering was considered a group of over, um, a hundred people or over. Uh, we've reduced that to fifty, knowing the impacts that a group of that size can have on, um, some of our parks. Uh, we also made some amendments to the parking permit. And failure to purchase a parking permit, um, with the required seven dollar fee would result in a fifty dollar fine. Um, and then we would want to have the ability to check for misuse of the disabled, um, per, uh, disabled persons parking spaces and be able to cite if, uh, we see that there's somebody who's using a disabled parking spot, um, when they should not be.
Before you move on, for the, for the smoking, how do you enforce that? I mean, it's, you see people smoking in the parks, uh, right out here at, um, um, the Del Rio Plaza. You know, where it was posted, no smoking. And they're smoking, you say, put it out and they say, no.
So we do have the ability within our ordinance and specifically in the parks, um, to be able to cite them. And it would give the ability for our staff, not just police services, to be able to do that.
And so you cite them?
Correct.
And?
So they receive a citation, they're required to, um, pay that citation. Since we collect personal information, we then follow up on those that do not pay through our collections agency. Um, one of the new sections that was added was the permit section. Uh, we wanted to ensure that county and state codes were being met. Uh, we did this in order to protect the health and safety of our patrons. Um, we've also made some amendments to the bounce houses that are allowed. Currently, um, no bounce houses are allowed in certain parks. Um, but we wanted the ability for the city, if we were having a city-sponsored event, um, to be able to have bounce houses or the water bounce houses that are, are popular in the summers. Um, as I mentioned, we made the amendment to the group gatherings. Um, food vendors and sales have to have permits through the recreation department before any food sales can occur, um, at our parks. Um, we also wanted to include language regarding the changes we made to the professional photographers um, and their requirement to have a permit, um, prior to any photography occurring. And then we wanted to, um, set some more parameters regarding the parking fee, particularly at Jacob Myers Park. So one of the items that we've, um, are changing is the addition of this Iron Ranger, which is a box that will be placed at the entrance of Jacob Myers Park. Um, the, so the residents, this is a, um, it will help aid for when we don't have any staff available in order to man the booth at the entrance and be able to take a payment. Um, the resident that comes in puts their five, seven dollar fee, sorry, into the, the box. They take their permit and they can then go park. Um, staff would then have the ability to go through, monitor and make sure that all vehicles have that parking permit and that if he was submitted for that parking permit. Um, and then cite those that do not, um, that did not make a payment. So the citation amount would be, um, fifty dollars. And so tonight, we are conducting the first public hearing for this item. Your consideration, um, if approved, would then move this to a second reading at the next meeting. And I'm available for questions as well as Annabelle, who worked closely, um, with Sue, uh, on these ordinance amendments.
Go ahead.
Sorry, apologies. Um, my comment or question or suggestion or thought was, I know we toyed around and with some ideas of food trucks and food vendors. Riverbank's ordinance, those are pretty rigid about food trucks. And we talked a little bit about throwing those in there. Would, has, was there any discussion or thought with those and did I miss anything?
So, the language that we included regarding food vendors would allow for food trucks if approved by the Parks and Recreation Director. Um, but it wouldn't allow them citywide, so specifically it would apply to the parks.
Okay, I must have missed that in there, but I appreciate.
Notice in the ordinance, they have, um, wearing of safety helmets and safety gear for if you're riding a bike or, uh, skateboarding. Have you been down to the skate park?
So the skate park is a bit of an anomaly because it is, um, it's considered a, I forgot what the word was. Now you stumped me. Um, it's considered, um, an extreme sport. And so a lot of the rules that would apply on a normal street would not apply within our, our skate park.
I have a concern. Uh, my concern is about the smoking ordinances you're putting into the park. Goes along with what the mayor said, enforcement. But it also goes along with secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke's a big item right now. You're hearing it all the time on TV. And people that don't smoke, being around it, are getting exposed to possible medical problems eventually. In my mind's eye, trying to be twenty-five feet away from, uh, the sandbox or the equipment or, you know, kids that are playing a softball game, that makes sense. Except, kids should and the public should be able to go anywhere in that park and not have to face secondhand smoke. And, uh, I would like to see us just ban smoking totally in the parks because then you know that, obviously if somebody's doing it, whether it's marijuana, whether it's cigarettes or the electronic stuff, then it's going on. Because I see a real problem with policing it with allowing it in there. And it's also still a medical hazard to the other public people that are there that may be walking on a trail or doing something, they're being exposed to secondhand smoke. So I just want you to consider it.
Uh, council member, if I may let you know, the language that we put in there was the requirements of the health and safety code, of which we did not have before. Now, those are the minimum requirements, however, the city council may make it stricter.
Okay, I appreciate that.
At desire.
And if, if that's the intention of council, uh, Tom and I were discussing, we probably need to do another first reading because that's a substantial change versus a minor one.
I'd like to take a look at that there in strategic planning. Uh, we can always amend it.
Yeah, and the way the ordinance reads, it says that certain city park areas are designated as smoke-free. And I'm not sure if there's a way in which you can designate the entire park as smoke-free, given the language in the ordinance. And then how much discretion we would have there.
But we need to do some of the, um, the work now and we can always modify as we look forward. Okay, is this a public hearing? I open it up for public comment?
Hard to get up with all the coats I have on. Uh, Scott McRitchie, uh, Riverbank resident. I'm really opposed to the Iron Guy that you put your bucks into. If it sat slow, then we don't need him. Because what the fees were for was for, uh, uh, emptying the garbage cans, for servicing the, the restrooms and things of that nature. So if they're not doing that, then they don't need the money for it. Now, it only takes about four cars, that's about twenty dollars, thirty dollars, to pay for somebody to collect the money. So if it's slower than that, uh, why have it? The Iron Rangers are a real pain in the neck. You got to get out of your car, you got to park it, you got to find the Ranger. You go over there first time, you don't have all the information they want, you got to go back to your car again. And you're reaching your wallet and you don't have seven bucks. You got ten bucks, you got five bucks. Where's the seven bucks? Anybody to make change? No. I'd really look at whether you need that or not. The whole reason for the fees was to offset the costs of servicing to make the park nice and so on. If it sat slow, maybe an hour, uh, between real slow and enough to pay for those people, uh, I don't think it's worth having it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Hey, I bring it back to the council. With a comment that Mr. McRitchie made, I think if we continue this and take a closer look at it, would be, um, best for our interest.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, we can.
I want the council's concurrence.
Maybe do a little extra off, Sue, do a little extra number crunching about, um, you know, her concern is that you have our super busy season at Jacob, this is really Jacob Myers. Uh, we have a very busy sissy, uh, season at Jacob Myers. And then at the very beginning of the season, at the very, very tail end of the season, it really tapers off. And so her issue was always that, um, look, the, the fee per council decision still applies even during those last couple of weeks, um, where things, uh, but staffing that booth, um, you know, during normal park hours, um, can get a little bit expensive. And so sometimes she thought maybe this is a way where we could still recoup those monies, which by the way, do go, Scott's right, that, but they do go towards, um, all the things he mentioned, plus tree cuts and, and addition, hopefully putting away some of that money to eventually repurpose parking lots and, and repave them if necessary. So what we could do is do a little analysis of what we actually think it would mean in terms of raw dollars and then you could have some data to make a decision on.
Yeah, um, I was part of the original decision on, uh, charging at Jacob Myers Park, although I was quite hesitant, I did, uh, vote for it. And the reason for that was at the peak hours, uh, peak times during the year, everything was overflowing. The trash cans were overflowing, uh, the restrooms couldn't be taken care of. We didn't have the staff to do, we didn't have the funding to do it. Jacob Myers Park is outside not only the city limits, but the county. And so we have no funds going in to take care of Jacob Myers Park. The, this was to help alleviate some of the issues, not only at Jacob Myers Park, but at River Cove, because people were using River Cove. We have data that goes back from two thousand one, where they just trashed that. So it helped mitigate some of those. So I think, um, if we go back to the original, if it's the overflow and it's the mess that people are making, that's what we're trying to, to take care of. The Iron Ranger, I, as soon as that came up, it reminded me of McHenry Recreational Area where they have that. And it doesn't really work. Um, but even if it did, then you have a fine of fifty dollars for it. Well, I didn't have exact change. And, um, so, you know, it's, you get into a, a big gray area. Um, let's rethink it and move it forward.
I've been to several state parks and they all have those. Um, I.
How to state part?
Well, I'm just saying, I, there, it's not something that's uncommon that I've seen in, in different parks. And I, I personally think it'll work in this area when there's, you know, a slowdown and we don't want to really have somebody working there, maybe from five to six or something. I, I don't think it'd be a big problem.
No, it, it's not a big problem, except for if you don't have the, uh, the exact change.
I've been there, I don't have the exact change sometimes. But, um, that's why you're supposed to check and see how much is.
And.
But I never do.
Okay, and, and it defeats the purpose of the original intent. Now, if we want to change the intent, fine. If it's a moneymaker, let's make it a moneymaker. But I don't think that's what the intent of, and that's not where we want to go with it. So, uh, with anyone else's concurrence, we want to continue it. I know there's smoking portion of it, which is quite, uh, uh, important, but we can continue it and within six weeks, bring it on back.
If. Yeah, mayor, if you'd like, uh, this makes it a teeny bit more messy, but you could, we could delete out the section relating to the Iron Ranger component for the time being. And you could move forward with everything else, provided everybody's okay with everything else. And then we could come back with Iron Ranger.
And smoking.
Yeah, I would prefer it being no smoking for all our parks.
So maybe we should just do the entire, what do you think?
I think, can I say something here?
You did.
I got more. I just think we've got three different items here, um, that we're talking about. And I think we need to maybe look at those a little more. And I'm just proposing that we, um, move this and as we said, put this on strategic pant, planning agenda also. Um, or, or not, or move it to another one. I don't think we're ready for any one of those three items to talk about it. So I think we've got three different areas. I don't want to necessarily throw all of it out or add it in there. And I think we have one council member missing tonight and would like her to weigh in on it too. I just think maybe we can hold this one off and, or put it on our strategic planning agenda, is what I would like to do.
Concurrence?
Strategic planning is about forty-five days out, so it's not that far.
It's not.
We could just have that as a point of discussion. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, so we're going to continue this?
Make a motion that we continue this item.
We have a motion to continue in a second.
And mayor, just to confirm, uh, council member Jones Cruz, continue to strategic planning.
Right.
Date not specific at this time.
Either, either are.
Are you going to table, uh, the, the general discussion?
Well, I guess she, um, Sue Fitzpatrick, Director of Parks and Recreation, she was concerned that we didn't have the health and safety code language that's required, so they can have those signs posted at the required locations, like at the sandlot. We didn't have that in.
But that's now in existence and as the Parks and Recreation Director, she can, at her discretion, put those signs up without direction from council.
Yes. We were just putting it in, we were putting it in the ordinance.
That's fine, that's fine. She has discretion on the Parks and Recreation, and Recreation, uh, Department. So if. So if, if we have in our health and safety, there's no smoking around the tiny tots, uh, you know, wherever, she has the authority. What she's asking for is some additional permissions, which we'll need to discuss.
Okay. Councilmembers Fossey, Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Okay, moving on. Item five point two, public hearing. First reading, introduction of a proposed ordinance repealing in its entirety, chapter one twenty-two, video franchise of chapter eleven, business regulation, and replacing it with a new chapter one twenty-two, video service franchise to include reauthorization of the peg fee and to automatically reauthorize the peg fee upon renewal of a state video franchise.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is also another, uh, normal business slash cleanup item, um, though admittedly less complicated than the last one. Um, before, Annabelle Aguilar, our city clerk, is going to give this report this evening. Before I send it, uh, send it to her, I want to just remind council and the community, because I've got this question a number of times since the agenda was posted. The peg fee, uh, goes to pay for, it's, it's dedicated for engagement in public, um, uh, it's a public engagement fee, so it's for these kinds of things like the renovation of the technology in this room was paid for primarily from that fee. And it's a very important one because really we have no other dedicated revenue for it. Uh, so it's the primary driver for doing this, but Annabelle will explain the other ones.
Okay, so for the purpose of the amendments were to reauthorize Charter Communications Incorporated to continue to collect and pay the peg fees, to include a provision for the automatic reauthorization to collect and pay the peg fees upon renewal of their state video franchise. And this action will also apply to AT&T Incorporated. The state adopted the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act in two thousand and six. It established a state video franchising system. Charter Communications Incorporated and AT&T Incorporated, those are the city's video franchise holders. They provide video service to the citizens. They provide the public educational and governmental channels, which are considered the peg channels. And that's for the city's use for video programming, like our city council meetings and the State of the City address and other public information. They collect and pay the city a peg fee, one percent of their gross revenue to support the peg channel facilities. So as you know, we were funded with our new equipment, our new update on all our media equipment to have better video and better viewing for the citizens. Um, we, it was funded by the peg fees. The holders' state video franchise expires after ten years and, um, and then it's renewed. And Charter's recently expired and was renewed. And because of that, the video franchise ordinance must be adopted again and reauthorize the continued collection and payment of peg fees. And for the future, we've added an automatic reauthorization clause to the ordinance to automatically allow the peg fee collection and payment to continue when their state video franchise is renewed. So tonight, we're recommending that you conduct the public hearing for the first reading and introduction of the proposed ordinance and consider its approval to initiate the second reading on March twenty-seventh for consideration of its adoption. So if you have any questions?
Any questions?
Uh, I'm understanding that we're going to renew charters, uh, as I, to be, charter will be serving us for ten more years? Is that how long it goes?
Yes.
Okay. My only question is, I, I've heard a lot of people complain, you know, to me about charter. And I'm wondering, have we looked at any other video services comparatively? Or is that something that we're not going to do? That there might be something better out there for the community or where do we stand with that?
So, uh, that's a good question and I've had that same discussion. People very frustrated at times with the service levels, um, and we totally understand that. Here's the complicated and frustrating thing about utilities. Uh, the infrastructure that Charter has in the ground, you only can collect, uh, franchise and peg fees, um, from utilities that are using the public right of way to provide that service to the home. So for example, the big frustration in Sacramento from cities is that DirecTV is not subject to these because they don't have any wires in the ground. It's, it's all, um, all through the air. So, um, one of the things that it, it is conceivable, and Tom, maybe you can, uh, jump in here, that if, you know, another service provider were to think that Riverbank was a good enough business decision to want to get into the market, they could conceivably come in and offer dual services. The big question though typically for these is, is it worth the millions and tens of millions of dollars in a construction cost that typically happens? So what more likely happens is at some point Charter's bought by another company or, or their franchise is bought out from under them, infrastructure's upgraded, and maybe you have a Comcast or Verizon or one of those others.
By federal law, they're not.
Theoretically possible, but practically not likely.
Federal law requires them to be competitive. However, uh, they have these professional courtesies that they won't invade someone else's territory.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing? Do we have any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I close the public hearing, bring it back to the council.
I make a motion that we accept item five point two as the first reading.
I second.
We have a recommendation to accept the first reading and to be presented, uh, second reading on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and we have a second.
Councilmembers Fossey.
Fossey, you're up.
Yes. Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes for zero.
Okay, item six point one, workshop and presentation on sample ordinance to address excessive nuisance service calls within the city of Riverbank.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item was, uh, is an item that council's been talking about for a very long time. It was, uh, put onto the strategic planning, uh, objectives, um, a few months back. And the city attorney has worked since that time to come up with an option, not the only option, but an option, uh, to address what, um, Riverbank Police Services and the city of Riverbank have experienced in terms of inordinate amount of public safety calls coming from a very small group of, of facilities. Some of those facilities are residential care homes, some are, uh, are, uh, general residences, uh, some are apartments, some are businesses, it just depends. Um, but the concept is that, um, when you have this type of, uh, inordinate call volume, it pulls away the already strained resources from your public safety, uh, from providing that proactive, um, behavior that, that the council is always interested in seeing. So, uh, the city attorney has put together an ordinance, uh, we put this on as a workshop and presentation because this is an aggressive ordinance and it's a change in, in, um, dynamic. And so we want to be able to have a discussion with council about the pluses and minuses to this and talk a little bit about the issue. Um, Carrie Fuller from Churchill White, our city attorney's office is here tonight. She drafted, uh, the ordinance and is prepared to step you through it. If you want to come on up, Carrie?
Got all these papers here. If you give me just one second while I get organized. Okay, super. Thank you so much. So as Sean mentioned, um, I'm here to step you through the ordinance, explain all the pieces of it, um, kind of open the discussion of how, if this is the approach you want to take, how that approach would look. If this isn't the approach you want to take, maybe identifying some alternate avenues, um, just getting everybody sort of talking about, oh, an impossible solution. So gonna start with a really high level overview that Sean already covered, so I'll do that really quickly. And then I'll spend most of the time, I'm gonna step through section by section of the ordinance, which we would normally wouldn't do, but because we want to talk about what each portion is gonna do, I wanted to go step by step so that we could all talk about the specifics to, to really talk about what we're proposing tonight. So, uh, our understanding is that you guys have been experiencing increased calls from specific areas, as Sean mentioned, and, um, it's causing the police to continue to visit the same areas over and over again, which is resulting in resources being taken away from other pa, public safety concerns in the city and, um, can compromise your ability to effectively address other concerns, which again, Sean already touched on, so that's why I'm going very quickly on this part. And so the draft ordinance, what it does is it imposes a penalty when they reach a certain number of calls. Spoiler alert, the way it's drafted right now is three. So it would be three calls and you get a notice before you hit the third one. At the third one, a, a penalty would be imposed.
That's in a sixty day period.
That's in a sixty day period. So it would, and we'd be suggesting it for inclusion in section one hundred of Title Nine of the municipal code. So got through that really quickly, as I promised. So now we're gonna do it step by step, what's in each section of the ordinance. So I'm actually gonna skip this because we already talked about it. Uh, section one would be the purpose. This restates what we're trying to achieve from this ordinance. It's, um, protecting all of the residents' health, safety, welfare, typical police power. Um, we're looking to offset the expense and the resources that are being pushed towards these calls. And then we also want to make sure that people who are victims of crimes or, or other abuse or any of those sorts of things that the police need to respond to are not punished or not interested in calling the police anymore for fear of what could result from the ordinance. So those are the two interests we're trying to balance through this. Section two discusses the scope and application of the ordinance. So it applies to private property. It does not apply to public property. So it would only be those that are privately held. Thank you so much. Um, it, in, it empowers your code enforcement officers and city police officers to be the one imposing this fine so they'd be the ones tracking the three, the three calls in, in the sixty day period. And then it again reiterates that we're making sure that it wouldn't apply to any calls that are for any of those things listed there, abuse, domestic violence, crime, sex offenses, any of the things that we want to make sure we're not dissuading people to call the police about. And property owners would not be subject to those fines either. So even if you were in a rental situation, the property owner wouldn't be subject to any fines for those kinds of act, for those calls that are made to cover those activities. So, oh, that is funny. I apologize for the weird text. Um, the definitions, the nuisance service call is pretty broad, as you can see there. It's, um, calls to service, to private property for issues that unreasonably annoy, injure, and endanger the health, safety, and morals of, or pose of any member of the public or tend to alarm, anger, or disturb others or provoke breach of the peace. Now, like I said, this is broad, but in the next section of the ordinance, we tailor it down so that it's clear that it's not just willy-nilly everything. So the penalty in the next section is where we start pulling back. And it says that it has to be the same property three or more times within sixty days. So it's got clear borders to what we're allowing the penalty to be assessed for. So the penalty is defined as two hundred and fifty dollars on the third call and then two hundred and fifty dollars for each additional call. So if you've got five calls, it's two fifty times three, which I'm not gonna do the math because I will mess it up. Um, again, your code enforcement offer, officer or chief of police before imposing the fine will review the calls that are supporting that fine to make sure that there isn't some reason that we shouldn't assess it because of what was involved in the call at the time. Section five is the notice that comes before the penalty is ever assessed. So the notice has to be sent out and it contains required information such as, this is how much you could be charged if we have to come again for, um, something that isn't crime, any of the things that we're not gonna charge people for. It's identifying what conduct was causing the nuisance that's resulting in this penalty. And then it also provides the person receiving the penalty an opportunity to, to contact staff to discuss what they can do or how they can change or what resulted in this. So it's not, uh, we're fining you and we're not ever gonna talk to you about it. It's a, it's a back and forth process. It also advises of the, um, opportunity for an appeal, and I'll get to appeals in one of the next sections of the ordinance. Here we are, the appeals section. Um, so here it's, you can, you have to submit a request for an appeal within ten days in writing to the city clerk. Then the rest of the appeals process follows what's already in your city, uh, your municipal code allowing for the, the hearing officer and all that sort of thing. And there's a thirty dollar non-reimbursed, uh, reimbursable fee if we find, so you have to submit the fee, but we will reimburse it if we find that the penalty was imposed for a call that it shouldn't have been. That's reserved from the ordinance. Uh, section seven is more of a legal issue of just retaining any other potential ways to enforce any of the recourse the city might have against somebody who's being assessed this penalty. Section eight is where we make more exceptions, again, making clear that anybody who's a victim of abuse or domestic violence, sex offenses, or human trafficking, crime, or nuisance conduct, or individuals in emergencies would not be subject to these fines for calling the police because we don't want to make it so that people can't call the police if they need to. Additional exceptions are also included here with, uh, rental properties. So if a landowner, a land, or, or landlord, we'll call them, has a tenant that is having these repeated nuisance calls, they can avoid the, the penalty by entering into agreement with the city, making clear, these are the steps we're gonna take to stop this nuisance conduct. Or they can move towards evicting their tenant who's continuing to do these, these things. But they, to show the city that I don't need, you don't need to assess the penalty, I'm taking care of it. Um, commercial business properties are also given the opportunity to enter into an agreement with the city to take affirmative steps to cease the conduct that's causing the calls. Okay, so that is what's in the ordinance. And then I wanted to just quickly round up, um, some concerns we think that might result and how we've tried to address them in the ordinance. Uh, first, would it make victims afraid of calling, calling the police? Again, as I've tried to kind of emphasize throughout, we've specifically exempted them to make sure that they aren't afraid, that they wouldn't be subject to this penalty. Um, will this increase the eviction of victims of crime? Again, they're exempted out. The one thing that it would increase potentially would be evictions of people who are engaged in nuisance conduct, who aren't victims of crimes, but they're doing things that we just, like they're causing increased calls. So they would be subject to additional, but not people who are victims of crimes or any of the other things that we've exempted. The safeguards make, make extra sure of this, especially with the review of the potential fines by the city staff before ever imposing them, just to give you a double check before they do anything. And the appeals process, of course, is a third check to make sure that what we're doing is not someone who shouldn't be fined. And then the alternative enforcement mechanisms, again, with the, the memorandum of understanding or moving towards just other, other routes to make sure that the city isn't bearing this cost. I think that's all I have. So what we're looking for is discussion, again, the specifics. If you want to move in this direction, what specifics you would like to look at or what other direction might be better than what's proposed in the ordinance. Happy to answer questions, provide additional information, or however else you'd like to move forward.
Some of the areas, um, for example, those who have people under their care go out and are nuisance, uh, aggressive panhandlers that, um, disrupt a lot of the local business areas. Um, I know of two individuals that are under care that go into parking lots as a woman's getting out of the car. They step in between the car and the woman and ask for money. And it's aggressive panhandling. So which is, I would say more like an assault, but, um, I can't do that. But that's, those are the type of activities we would like to curtail out in the public. Will those calls for that person's supposed to be under the care of another, would that be applied to that?
So the way the ordinance is drafted, no, because it's to the property, the private property where they're going. So in that specific instance, there'd have to be a different, like, tool in your toolbox, such as like an aggressive panhandle. such as like an aggressive panhandling ordinance, which I've seen elsewhere that would address something like that.
And that was actually a comment that the chief had when he reviewed this and we were, um, the city attorney's office was looking at that and other ways, like she mentioned, that we could incorporate. This probably is step A, but not the only step.
Yeah.
So that would be a separate ordinance?
Yes.
Different, that was, that was kind of on the same lines and question I had. I've had a couple instances, not with the business, but parked in a car. And obviously, an individual that I know is a, is a tenant of one of the care homes was beating on the window of the car that was in front of me, or about four deep, turning right onto, um, by the church there, um, from, by the Catholic church. And so I'm honking my horn and calling nine one one, but by the time they got there, he'd already wandered off. And they found him later, but that, that won't take care of, of any kind of nuisance when they're not, they don't stay in their care home twenty-four seven. So a lot of these incidences that are going on are occurring it, in the shopping parking lots, in the street, and, um, front of the stores down here. So going through garbage and, and collecting stuff at night after you've put your garbage cans out, um, coming out of a restaurant in another shopping mall and asking for food and, um, so it doesn't take care of that, which is.
That's, that's something else we would have to address.
Yeah, that was one of my concerns.
One thing I'd like, chief, do you have some statistics that we were talking about? For, uh, some of the facilities? What I, I don't wanna make it punitive to the businesses, but what you have, like, I think we have seven care homes. There are, um, ma- majority of them have maybe ten or less calls a year, but there's a couple that have in excess of a hundred. That's, is something that we have to put the care back into those businesses. And then that doesn't address the aggressive panhandling outside that.
Yeah, there are three that generate most of our, the majority of our calls for service. I know, uh, from five fourteen, two thousand and twelve to five fourteen, twenty thirteen, uh, those three generated a hundred and twelve calls for service. Now that's at the facility itself, so it doesn't capture the types of calls you're talking about, where they, um, wander into a public venue or on another private property and then they, um, generate some of their call. We're not, we're not capturing that. So that's not part of these statistics. But from seven five sixteen to seven five seventeen, those three facilities, same three that I'm speaking of, generated a hundred and sixty-four calls for service. So you can see the, you know, the growth there, it's, it's a trend that, um, just keeps growing.
I don't wanna be punitive towards them, I want them to do what they're supposed to do.
And this isn't, you know, this isn't just about care home facilities, this is other businesses. We had a, a business that is no longer operating, but they generated eighty-seven calls for service in one year. And, and obviously, you know, those calls take time. And they, they do hamstring our ability, retard our ability to, to be proactive and do some other things that we'd like to do as far as providing, you know, a certain level of service to the city, so.
Okay, any co- questions or comments before I open it up?
I have a question. Uh, I had a situation when I was playing pickleball a few weeks ago down at, uh, Zerilla Park, where I think one of the people that you referred to from one of the halfway houses was there. And he just stood outside the cyclone fence and made remarks to the people. And then he used some foul language. I told everybody, just ignore him. I figured the guy was from someplace like this, but how is a situation like that handled, you know? Say he were to come back again another time and do the same. He was there for two hours and just hanging around and making comments. And we kind of ignored him, but a couple of times he started using foul language. He said, hey, we really don't appreciate you doing that. So he just backed off, but then a few minutes later, he was using foul language again. We basically ignored him, but my concern is that if it could happen again, would that fall anywhere under this?
Well, if it, you know, there's, you know, there are a lot of facets to this because if somebody is using language, it's likely to elicit a violent reaction. You know, they're being, using words that are so egregious and offensive to where somebody is likely to violently respond, and then there is a penal code section for that. But there's a threshold that needs to get crossed because of freedom of speech. Um, and you also have the aspect of that these are people with mental health issues. So being able to show criminal intent is another issue. Um, so there, you know, there's, it's hard for me to say that, yes, just do this and it's, it's a simple fix. It's, it's not that simplistic. But I would say that if they are causing a problem, at the very least, call and at least have a deputy respond, then they can evaluate it when they get there.
Okay, thank you.
So, you bet.
And also with going to a business, um, even though they may have a lot of calls, some of them may be unique in nature that you would not assess it as an excessive call, but a necessary call. But, uh, that would have to be, are they following their, their guidelines from the state or from whatever, uh, business that they're in? And then sharing that, the, the people they take care of are being cared for.
The facility, yeah, and the facilities that I'm speaking of, the statistics that I'm mentioning, you know, a, a large number of those calls would be, um, they would not be included in this, they would be exempt. Um, because, you know, it's a legitimate reason for calling and really no business practice they engage in is going to prevent them from having to call, so, um, it wouldn't even apply, but.
Okay.
There are times where it might.
Thank you. Any other comments? Um, any comments from the public?
One, yes, one is a question, and that was, at one point, uh, is it the first or the second time, uh, when they tell the person who made the nuisance call that the next time we're gonna penalize you, when, when does that come in? I, I could see the pattern, but I didn't know exactly when they get the notice that one more strike and you're out.
After, after the second time in a sixty day period. So they can have a call a, a month and not get fined.
I understand, but I say, wh- when is the warning period? Because by the time the third, he's paying how many ever bucks it was.
That, those are numbers right now, they'll probably be adjusted. But, uh, as we, as we go forward, and it could be a greater number, but it's, what we're here for is a discussion on should this ordinance be in place? And how do we handle those calls? So, right now it says after the second time, you'll get a notice.
Okay, that, that's.
But you could have four calls and none of them be, uh, qualified.
No, no, I understand that, but, uh, let's say they all of them are qualified, one, two, and three. But if it's the second time, you say, hey, one more, if we have to come out here a third time on the same kind of nuisance call, then we're gonna fine you two, uh, whatever it was. Then that's fine, but I didn't see that really explained in the.
Yeah, so from like an administrative perspective, we would wanna have a practice that after, at that second call, they're being notified, uh, or shortly thereafter, hey, listen, we've had two of these same kinds of issues within a sixty day period. We have this ordinance, the third time, we're gonna have this, this issue. Please contact if you wanna discuss how we can avoid, you know, that third call.
The other is, we've had, uh, problems with three of the evidently seven care homes. Some of them were coming in for food and they're being fed, and then they're selling the food because they're already being fed. When we talked to the managers of those places, they called the people in. And most of them are pretty easygoing people. And when they told them, hey, you don't go back there again, or you don't do this, or you don't go in and harass the people that are in the line, we had no more problems. So I think one of the things might be with the ones that are roaming around, they're all probably in some kind of care home. And if you, and if the arresting officer, the one who sees that person in the wrong place doing the wrong thing, uh, could find out that it was this certain care home, they might be able to shut that down pretty quick.
Uh, I think if we go to a, um, uh, aggressive panhandling or some type of that ordinance like that, where we can identify the individual and where they're from, that can then mitigate, hopefully, control, they may not be aware of who's doing it.
Right.
And, and that's, that's again, communication, but we have to, I'd like to make sure that we set up how we handle this and then move forward with it.
Yeah, because that's where it's gonna be, if you give the citation to the guy who's standing there harassing the, uh, O'Brien's, uh, patrons.
My brothers.
Okay. Uh, at any rate, uh, you could tell them, hey, you can't do that, and the next time we're gonna find you and we're gonna do this and that. They don't have any money, they don't care, they don't, whatever else. But if the place they're staying says, hey, you do that one more time, you're out of here, uh, they listen to it, so that was my statement.
Good points, thank you. Comments?
House of Memorial Riverbank, I have a problem with this. I don't know who this young lady's from or what this is all about, but, you know, some people have a legitimate call, and they might call you four times in a month. Especially with the spring and summertime, with all these boom boxes going on at two o'clock in the morning. You're trying to go to work the next morning or do something.
That's not those type of calls.
That's not the type of call?
No.
So what type of call would you call a nuisance call?
Let's say that you are care, individual, is, if you're calling about someone who's making it outside of your property that you can't control on your property, that doesn't apply. But let's say you have children in your, your home that are having the boombox and you're calling the, the police on those kids because they're having a boombox in your house, that would be called a nuisance call after the second one going into the third one.
Can't control your children, huh? I was under the impression, I was under the impression, it's coming up something new here because, because, uh, uh, if you can put a permit on something, Riverbank wants to do it, you know, any way to make money, I know, so.
We're not here to make the money, we're here to stop the nuisance call.
You can continue to call.
Please do. No other further comment? Okay, um, so what's our next step? Come on up, what's our next step?
Well, to me, it sounded like a next step would be, um, an aggressive panhandling ordinance, because that seemed to be a concern for everyone. And then, um, we didn't really get much feedback on what we had proposed here. And if you want, if you wanted to give us feedback, that's great, or if you wanted to adopt it as it is, we can, um, bring it back to council for first reading, once it's been properly noticed and all that stuff. But we haven't received much feedback, so I wouldn't recommend that.
Okay, then, here's my feedback. I'd like to have it a, a progressive. And I'd have it the first, you know, you'd do it five times, because after, you may have five calls in the first month. And by the time you do a notice, it gets to them, they could have already their fifth one. I would, myself, I'd like to have it progressive. After the fifth one, now you start your second cycle, not in sixty days, but if you have in a, in a three hundred and sixty-five days, you have, uh, the next level is, let's say the first level is fifty dollars per call after that. So the next five is fifty dollars a call, and then you go a lot higher on the eleventh call through the fifteenth call. So that way it's, it's a stepped program, it's, uh, it's progressive. And it's giving the, the, uh, individuals, uh, notice that we're actually serious about the, the nuisance calls. I don't wanna prevent anyone from calling whatsoever, if they have to think about it. But I do wanna make sure that, uh, some of the calls, I know the, the fire department has to respond also add to some of these calls that were preventable, but are being called for, uh, you know, uh, aggressive individuals within an, um, a facility. That was the, police are called, injuries happen, the paramedics get there, the ambulance gets there, and it, it gets, it builds up.
I'd like to hear.
Faces lit on fire.
I'd like to hear what the chief would like and how many calls he feels is appropriate.
I like things simple. That's how law enforcement personnel are, black and white. I, I like the, the three, the original, um, configurations just because if I have to get a matrix out, uh, neither myself or have my staff do the calculus for other configurations, then I'm thinking we're just gonna be chasing our tail when it comes to charging people, uh, for our resources, because we'll be putting more time into it to where we're gonna, we're just, we're not, it's all gonna be mute anyway.
Couldn't your citations go to the finance department to make the billing?
Well, you know, we, we should probably have that internal discussion, but.
I think the more difficult you make it, the harder it is on our police guys.
We're busy enough that I, yeah, I just, I, I'm not real crazy about, um, adding much complexity to it, there's something.
And we're trying to stop it. We're not trying to say, okay, stop, we're trying to stop it.
And what was, uh, mentioned earlier as far as, you know, finding out what care home, and, um, our deputies do routinely deliver tenants back to the home and, and let the, the people that are managing the homes, you know, know what's going on, and make them aware. Um, so that's, that effort's been underway for years and years.
Mayor? Okay, I'll, I'll take the original.
Okay, uh, so if I, uh, would it be council's opinion, if, if I'm hearing some general support for this, to bring this back and maybe all, but do you wanna bring it back at the same time we bring back, uh, or workshop an aggressive panhandling ordinance? Because it kinda sounds like they're sort of go hand in hand here.
I'm under the, uh, notion that I would like to see both together, but, um, just because I think they go hand in hand. Um, but I like the original in there, I'm fine with.
And then do an aggressive panhandling.
Yeah, I really think that needs to be added in there, because I don't think that's, this is, this is awesome start, and I think we're moving in the right direction, but I think it needs just a little bit more to it and.
So you think they should be on the same ordinance?
I do, well, I think, no, not necessarily the same ordinance, but you roll them out together, because I think they do belong together.
So maybe what we'll do is we'll bring back an aggressive panhandling workshop, have a similar discussion of this, and we'll bring both.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Mayor, if I could, if you'd just indulge me for one moment, a member of the public I had a conversation with about this item, and we had a discussion about like, why, why are we doing this, why is it necessary? Seems sort of like a slippery slope, and I promised I would mention this, um, idea. Uh, I said that, you know, all of the services that we provide are finite, and there's only so much to go around. I said, a good way to think about this is, if you think about the water department, if you, uh, break your sprinklers because you're riding, you're driving your truck over, uh, an area of your front lawn, and you have to call the water department out to shut off your water, okay, we'll do that. And then let's say that you do it another time in the same month, and then you do it another time. And you just continue to do it because of your own mismanagement. At what point does the resources of the public start to become, um, taken unfairly? And so that is the same general concept that we have here with the police, police services. Turn your microphone back on.
Went off. And just a thought, the whole point of this is to keep it under control and eventually prevent it. Maybe somewhere along the line with those fines, we should include some type of, and I don't know exactly what it would be of short, short class training of some sort, so they understand why this is a problem. You know, it's something just to consider that really may, it may get it, the impact of it across to them, why this is going the way it is and give them a better understanding. I don't have it clear in my mind, I don't know if it was a county class they could go to or something, but just, just a thought.
Yeah, that's a good idea, and I, I think the other thing that, uh, we should remember is that this is, any code enforcement, uh, related ordinance is designed to dissuade behavior. And so in a perfect world, maybe this gets applied half a dozen times and we get to a stage of compliance and it just becomes another part of our code. We don't use it all that often.
Hopefully. Okay, you got directions on that? We're gonna go to item six point two. Creation of an ad hoc committee on illegal fireworks. Thank you, chief.
Mayor, I'd like to point out that I always subject my items very short, so you don't have to read a whole paragraph.
I've read it. That's good.
Um, this, this item was a, another strategic plan item. Uh, you could tell that staff is in full swing of trying to get those knocked out before our next session. So, um, this, uh, this item was something that Councilmember Campbell brought up and has been, we hear about it, you know, I'm sure we've heard about it every year, it's gotten worse. Uh, I think generally, most folks feel it's gotten worse the last four to five years, to the point where literally illegal fireworks are ju, if you work for the city of Riverbank and admin, especially in public safety, probably all you talk about is illegal fireworks during, you know, from July first through the tenth every year. So, uh, one of the things that Councilmember Campbell had discussed is perhaps we need to get, uh, a group together to discuss some real alternatives to what we're doing now, which is, uh, very little, because it's pretty difficult to, to enforce, uh, over a, a city of the size of ours. which is uh, very little, because it's pretty difficult to, to enforce uh, over a, a city of the size of ours. Um, there are a number of different possibilities. I've written and been involved in ordinances that are punitive and, and, and also educative ones. So um, the idea here is that um, an ad hoc committee be, be founded um, potentially with no more than two council members. Any staff members that council thinks should be involved, and then potentially some members of the community that may be interested in being, getting involved. Um, and have a couple meetings and maybe develop some recommendations for council to discuss moving forward. And uh, also Councilmember Campbell and Councilmember Fossey have expressed interest to me in, in being part of the committee.
Do we have any uh, ordinance right now stating what is illegal in fireworks?
Uh, it sort of falls back on the um, uh, California, is it the fire code or penal code? One of the two, one of the two um, safety codes has, yes, very clear, health, health and safety code, has very clear. Basically, the rule is, if it shoots in the air, it's probably illegal.
Okay, and then we need to, also, if we're gonna form this committee, they should look at, um, yes, it's illegal, is there something punitive to go along with it? That will um, yeah, because um, I've heard a good story last Fourth of July, where um, a family got fined a thousand dollars, and all their neighbors pitched in a hundred dollars each, and they kept doing the illegal fireworks. I already got my, and all that is putting uh, people's homes in, in jeopardy. I had a, a nice little rocket come on down and blow up at my second story window height, and shot all the um, the sparks all over. And I was lucky I didn't have one of my redwoods go up in flames. So, that's just a personal. I think for everybody's household, has to be protected. So, yeah, I'm for it. So um, there's, was it Campbell and Fossey? Okay, you wanna take charge of it? Okay, who do you need?
I'd like to have at least um, from each district, for the voting district, two possibly, well, minimum one, possibly two, if you think you need it. Representatives from each district. And then I'd like to have a council member, I mean, pardon me, I'd like to have either Sean or Maricela to represent the city.
I know who that is.
And uh, it'll be easy, Maricela. And then I'd also like to have uh, the, somebody from the police department and the fire department uh, on the, you know, to be there to voice their thoughts too. Because we need their, uh, they're gonna be very involved in it. And I happened to attend last year at the Lake of Cities a, a session on this. And I learned a whole lot of things that I don't think a lot of people know. The problem's growing, and part of the reason the problem's growing is, when they confiscate these fireworks that are brought in illegally a lot of times on the ships, then they're considered hazardous, but they don't have a real law, according to what the gentleman said, the fire chief up in the area of Gault, an, an area there. He said, they sit there and then all of a sudden they disappear and get back into the market again. So there's a lot of things, and they had a lot of different ideas that different cities were doing, and I'll share those with them, and maybe we can come up with something. And also, we can give something out to the public to let them know that we're working on the problem, and that this won't work without their help.
So um, I'm gonna ask for public input in one moment, but I think what we need to do is put out that we're forming at ad hoc. This is not a decision that we're making tonight just to have it. And that applica- applications can go to City Hall, uh, and you'll do the screening as well with you, Councilmember Fossey. Screen who you want, and then uh, come up with a plan by uh, March thirty-first?
Yeah, I think so. That would be good. Let's get moving on it.
Yeah, well, you're gonna need something. Now, it's gonna be-
But, did you say by March thirty-first? Oh, next year, yes, we can have that done by nineteen-
Now, we're gonna have, well, what we have, back it up, back it up, okay.
I think he meant April.
No, I did not. You back it up.
We gotta get it out.
Excuse me, back it up. You have to have two readings, and it has to be in place before one July. Two readings will put you in May. Oh, I'm sorry, the last one in May, we don't have. So now it has to be done by the first of May. Back it up. You have April to get it all written. They go through staffing. So I wasn't really joking, but yes.
Okay, well, then we need, we need to get the information out to the committee ASAP. I mean, to the public, to the public.
So uh, I would just, of course, we will try to meet those deadlines. But uh, I would just remind is that if you, just depending on how the discussion at the committee goes about what you want, I think that if you can get something in place by the, the fourth, that would be great, but getting a good policy, I think is mo- most important.
Right. Okay, anyone from the public wishes to comment on the ad hoc committee on illegal fireworks?
I've been waiting for a long time. Haskell Moore, Riverbank. Patterson Road, where Sierra Railroad takes over right after Eighth Street going east about fifty yards. It's nothing but a grass patch this tall, thirty feet wide. I called them twice. I've been to the fire marshal over here two, three times the last two years. We have a fire there every year, Fourth of July, since you brought Fourth of July up. They've been put out by residents, people that live on Patterson Road, from my house to the high school. The last time, last Fourth of July, it's put out by tenants that live in our new apartments on the corner of Claus and Patterson Road. I come down to the fire, uh, fire department the next day, and I get told by somebody different every time I come down there, oh, send this to the right people. I said, who's the right people? So one day I find a guy over there driving on the railroad track, his little truck, and I went and weighed him down. I go, hey, who's the right people about all of this? And he goes, what's the matter? And I go, this grass between the asphalt and the railroad track, you guys gotta clean this up. I said, the other railroad department, they clean theirs up, and they spray it also from a vehicle that shoots about eighty feet in the summertime. I've seen them out there about ends of summer, and they're spraying, and it smelled like Roundup. And the, the people that's on the street don't even know they're doing this. They're just spraying, they're not asking, they're not noticing, nothing. That's something else that really should be addressed. With this fire hazard that we have between Eighth Street and Claus, something's gotta be done about it. When I flagged the guy down from the railroad, he pointed something out to me that I didn't know. The railroad has twenty-five feet from the center of the track towards Patterson Road. After that, it belongs to the city of Riverbank. He says, we're clean. It's a city that needs to be out here doing the mowing and cutting the trees.
I'll just comment on that, twenty-five feet from set, no, they own the, they own the property all the way to the co- asphalt. And the reason why we know that is that we're trying to take the, uh, use that property to widen Patterson Road. You've been in those discussions, you know that we're trying to work with the railroad, so you know that that's not a correct statement.
So-
It is, uh, the one that between Eighth Street and Claus Road is Sierra, Northern Sierra. From Eighth Street to BNSF is BNSF.
Right, okay. So why can't Sierra, if it's theirs, why can't they clean it up? Also, from the high school on out to Eleanor, they don't clean none of that. But seriously, we have some big fires, or we had a big one ju- last, last Fourth of July.
We'll continue to address it with Northern Sierra.
Fire department, they're, they're pretty busy, so they're trying to issue citations and take care of other things. And when they showed up, it was like a half an hour after these folks put it out already. But one of these days, it's gonna be a windy Fourth of July.
So, uh, so you're for this ordinance?
I'm not saying I'm for nothing. I'm saying that I want somebody to come out and mow this grass that I've been complaining about for fifteen years. Death years, it's like-
I've just waited to hear the staff comment about the next meeting.
Uh, if you're gonna have two people from each of your districts, I think the uh, council member needs to pick those people. Because if you wait for people to volunteer by the time you get the information out and everything else, it'll be next Christmas. So you need to have the responsibility of two people to head to your committee.
Okay. Thank you, that's a great idea. Any other comments? I bring it back. We have no action on this, correct?
Yeah, just direction on the makeup, that's enough.
Okay, go ahead. Either Councilmember Campbell, you wanna make the direction, recommendation on the makeup?
Yeah, I'd like to get together with Cindy and talk out a, a schedule, uh, because she's gonna be involved in it. I have no problem with the idea of each of us, each council member picking two people representatives from their district. Uh, the, the at-large, uh, maybe Jones Cruz, and I can split that, because we, we're still at-large, you know?
Well, one of you can pick for the district that you don't represent.
What's that?
One of you could pick for the district that's not represented.
I think it's District One that's not represented right now. And uh, if we know some people in District One, or you know some, maybe you could suggest them, you know?
Okay.
Okay? And Councilmember Fossey, I'll talk with you after the meeting, when we can get together at your convenience and start laying this out.
Okay, so the ad hoc committee will be consisting of two council members and additional um, members from the public, uh, as required, uh, and for the purpose of uh, creating a uh, illegal fireworks um, ordinance to subdue the activity.
And I'll also be talking to the fire department and the police department to see if they can give us a rep to attend to meetings, because I think their input is very important.
Very good, very good. Okay, that was a motion. If somebody wants to second that, second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, oh, okay, go ahead. Mine was.
Councilmembers Fossey? Yes. Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
God, who did that? Oh yeah, makes me look real bad. Okay, uh, item seven, seven one, staff comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Two comments tonight. First off, we have a, a, a person attending tonight's meeting um, and on our staff that's not always here. Uh, Ron Werner with Parks and Rec, he's our Parks and Rec maintenance supervisor. I'm pointing him out because every single council member at some point or another, and a lot of community members have contacted me thanking the city for fixing the, the uh, uh, water feature here, and the plaza, and the water feature out on the bend at one oh eight. And, and that gentleman is primarily responsible for that, so just wanted to uh, recognize him, since he's not, not at most meetings. And then uh, our Public Works Director, Michael, has a, a really good piece of news to share tonight.
I, I heard it hit the cup first time. Evening, Councilman Mayor, Michael Riddell, Public Works Director for the City of Riverbank. Um, as you know, the City of Riverbank is part of a larger group called the Stanfoss Twomey River Groundwater Basin Association, or STRGBA. Um, we are actively working on the Groundwater Sustainability Act, and part of that is the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And we have been able to secure a grant through the Department of Water Resources for a million dollars, to go towards that groundwater sustainability plan. However, that plan is gonna cost us about a million and a half. So there will be some out of pocket for each group within the STRGBA. Um, I estimate our end of it will be about sixty to sixty-five thousand. But we were able to, and we have already been issued the fact that we have that million dollars.
Very good, good news.
That's all of our updates, thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Fossey?
Um, I'm sitting here thinking of what I wanna say, and I'm just gonna do a public service announcement. Be careful who you hug, because the flu is going around. My daughter says that half the school has been out, and so I just wanna caution, be careful who you hug, because it does pass that way, and you don't wanna get it. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Uh, I just have two things. Uh, the Riverbank Youth Softball and Baseball League has their opening ceremony this Saturday.
Catching.
And at ten AM, the park, so if you're around, come check that out. Um, I had, there was an event downtown last weekend at the store, and I had visitors visiting from all over the Bay Area, as far south as Fresno and Chalchilla. And some of the comments I'm just sharing tonight were how fabulous the plaza looked, and the fountain, and I'm not just saying, I shared that with Sean earlier, um, that they were, this is a great little town. They'd not ever been here before. It was kind of, it was a shop hop, so they're traveling around almost two hundred miles. And one pit stop was here, Riverbank, and so it was pretty cool to have first timers coming into town and making comments how awesome downtown looked. So um, that is in there, and I think that, um, oh, I just had one other question. Modesto, the City of Modesto does not have their um, dispensary ordinances in place, am I correct?
Neither does the county.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
So the comments made-
So that was the only thing I wanted to say in my comment, that to my knowledge, Modesto does not have any legal dispensaries in their city limits. So if there are any dispensaries going on, they are illegal, and hence even more reason to have ordinances in place, so you can take care of some of those issues. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Yes?
First of all, I'd like to encourage uh, the citizens to volunteer for some of our nonprofits that are in the community. They're listed on our website, and several of them uh, are running on older people, and then they need help from younger people. They're good nonprofits, and I'd hate to see some of them dissipate, because they're not getting the help they need from the community. And I think you'd find it very rewarding. And secondly, there are gonna be several events going on in the next couple of months from some of these nonprofits. Watch for them. There'll be, I think, you, you do something with the women's club, don't you? Enchiladas or something like that. There'll be the omelette breakfast in May with the Historical Society, so get, put them on your calendar when you see them and support them. Thank you.
I'm gonna make a pitch for the City of Riverbank to reopen our um, association with the Riverbank Housing Authority. The reason for that is that we kinda lost, we, we separated ourselves when Jill was here. And there is a need for the Riverbank Housing Authority to not only uh, to exist, but to be very proactive in some of the housing issues that we have. Whether it be homeless issues, or uh, family oriented issues. Uh, but we need to be um, more involved and get some younger blood in, those who know it all, to come on up and help us form it all. And um, uh, first off, asking that, that we look into a closer association, and that on Thursday this uh, week, here at six thirty, we'll be discussing housing uh, for the homeless. Uh, and also some family housing for those families who are homeless. So please come by and help us uh, discuss the issues, and then possibly come up with solutions. The grand jury is looking for nominees from our community to help with the, uh, being um, unbiased oversight of government, and to investigate complaints from citizens about the operation of county and city governments. For those of you who have complaints, and want to go to the oversight, please submit your name to the uh, city clerk, and they're giving it to you. And I will review and pass on uh, who we're gonna have as the grand jury representative from the City of Riverbank. And I'm glad you brought up the, the marijuana, the dispensaries. Uh, Modesto has no dispensaries. In fact, uh, the county has no dispensaries, although they will have sixty-three within the county. Those who say that they have increases in crime because of dispensaries, those are illegal dispensaries. Uh, and I believe that some of the research needs to be looked at a little closer. Uh, Flavors opened. I believe uh, they're offering tours of their facility to have you take a look at their security and safety, and how they operate, and I believe it will alleviate a lot of fears. You have to be twenty-one or older to go into Flavors. It's not for the youth. But uh, I encourage those who would like to take a look at the dispensary, do so. Ask for a tour, they're giving tours tomorrow. Uh, if you can make it, uh, just give them a call or go by and say, I'm here to take a tour of the facility. You'll see how much safety they put in it, and how much it is um, under surveillance. It's amazing that the amount of uh, cameras that they have, and how deft that they, they have it in. I, those who were smoking marijuana outside the, the dispensary that I heard tonight, I can't comment to that, because it wasn't open, there wasn't people there. So I've seen people downtown smoking, but that's not from the dispensary, that's not opened yet. So it's, it's, how do you enforce these regulations of smoking? how do you enforce these regulations of smoking? Well, you know, we all have to be proactive. There is an increase in crime because of marijuana. And I'll say that's true. That's all the illegal stuff. That's the stuff, that the base of the illegal activities is marijuana. Take that away, they have no base. They have to change their operations in the black market. I truly believe that. But if you say, I'm not going to do anything, bury my head, they're going to keep going after the kids, they're going to keep going after the schools, and it is in Enoch, it is in Riverbank, and it is in buyer. The kids all know it. So, if you don't see it, then it's good. But in this area, sixty percent of the kids in high school have used marijuana, which is unfortunate. It is the contaminated stuff. I don't want them to use any of it. But let's take away the black market as much as we can. With that diatribe, we're going to go to closed session. The public may have a comments for five minutes on any closed session item as set forth on the agenda prior to the city council LRA adjourning to closed session. Item eight point one, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code five four nine five seven point six, agency representative Sean Scully, city manager, employee organization miscellaneous employees mid-management bargaining unit. Item eight point two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision Bravo of government code five four nine five six point nine, three potential cases. Item eight point three, public employment pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven Bravo, title city manager. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we adjourn to closed session.
Thanks for attending. Thanks for attending.